Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today seeking wisdom for the city that we love. We hope that you look out after the governing body and city staff and all of the people in God's name. Your name we pray. Amen. Okay, approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second by Brent, second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, citizen comments? What do we got, April? Anything going on?
There's always things going on.
There's always things going on. And nothing to report on?
We have three communicators that we have. We have three donors.
Very cool. So you keep those at the library?
People take them out. They're never at the library because they're gone.
Oh, okay. Very cool.
How's the fundraisers going?
The gala is Friday. Yes, we have 75 people coming, so it's not bad for first time.
All righty. Moving on, the consent agenda?
Question on that brick, that well, is that from some long time ago or is that something recent or what?
The utility cut?
Well, it was a well with something...
No, that's recent. And we are digging back into the well thing again. And I've talked to Brian, and I don't know if you talked to Ryan or not. We did have some issues with the work Clark did. And so we have had to pull number four apart again. And I don't know if it's a legal issue or not. They won't warranty it. We found, we had a different company come in that's local. We went in and we found the supposed to be all new shaft in there. The top shaft's bent, the bottom shaft's bent. The lane is not for sure whether they actually rebuilt the pump or not.
We're still conducting our due diligence to get our ducks in a row and to ascertain how best to proceed.
So right now it is down in...
It's all happened to be third party.
And this is the company we've had do work for us forever. It's kind of interesting. I had a third-party company that we aren't dealing with from Salina call me while they were doing work and their sales guy just bad-mouthed Clark that we did, that was doing the work. And I thought he was just sour grapes. But now we're learning that a lot of the Clark people have left. They're senior people. And so maybe they're having some issues and we might be one of those issues, unfortunately.
So is the actual pump that's bad?
What happened is we noticed a vibration. And so first thing we did was pull the motor apart, run the motor. The motor didn't seem to be vibrating. So then obviously you look in the shaft and the column, and to do that, you've got to pull it. And they pulled it. And as I said, we've got the top section of shaft and bottom section has a bend in it. They don't think it was ever replaced. They're curious about whether the pump was actually ever rebuilt. And they're actually questioning, we sent the motor over to B&amp;B to have it checked out because it was supposed to have been gone through. And there's some question as to whether the motor was actually gone through as they said it was. So that's something we've been dealing with and Brian and I have been discussing. We haven't brought it to council yet because we don't have an explanation yet, by and large. And it's, it may just be poor workmanship like it sounds. We did have, if you'll remember right, they did four and seven last year. And within two weeks of them doing seven, it started pumping sand and we shut it down. They went in there on their dime. They pulled it and they warranted the pump because they did not concrete the bottom of that hole like they should have. And it drew sand up into that brand-new submersible pump and just wrecked it. And so they put a brand-new pump in. And we spent the entire time when they were out there watching them concrete that, pump it clear, pump it clear, pump it clear, and then test pump it and everything. And we're confident now that's working well. But then we have number four come up, have an issue. So, yes, we do have an issue there.
Do we have somebody else we can trust?
I believe we can trust Lane Christensen. They're local. And we had them come and pull it apart. We went down to their shop. And their people showed us all the parts. It was a lot more in-depth than we'd gotten before. Showed us what they found that they believe is wrong and they know is wrong. And they're trying to come to the conclusion whether these parts were actually replaced as we were told they were.
Just thought it was unusual if we had to go back into it that quick.
It is a problem. I agree. It is a problem, yes. And it was a problem with seven and they warranted it. We probably won't use them again regardless.
Because we initially thought that this would be warranty work.
Yes. And they scoffed. I got them on the phone and I asked Brent Clark three or four times, so what is the warranty on this? And he literally would not answer the question. So they're dodging it and ducking it.
The next question is, is Ryan, we got to record this thing, or do we have to?
I'll talk to Brent after the meeting. I mean, it sounds like I probably need to get him on. I mean, I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail here. Definitely go with the best.
We've spent a significant amount of money with them and they did a lot of work for us to have to redo it. That's the situation on that.
Yeah, and we still have, we're still in the process of due diligence, identifying our best support.
As soon as we see a vibration in one of those, we shut it down to minimize any damage. And so that's what we did. And so we've just been sitting on it. We have been running for the most of winter on two wells and doing just fine. We just fired five up again last week just to bring it online. And as soon as we figure out what's for, what's going on for, and get it back together, we'll fire it up as well for the summer. But that's where we sit.
None? You have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion by Sarah.
Aye.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passed. H1?
Honorable Mayor and Council, the first two items this evening are for Phase Three, Cloverleaf addition for streets and water. This will be the final culmination of the third phase for Cloverleaf. Phase one was this light gray area with Phase Two being this darker shaded gray. And the paving, obviously, the kind of that, I don't know, kind of a reddish-pinkish color, with Phase Three being this tan and the purple. And then the dots have been identified. And you'll notice in the petitions there, we have parcels labeled that have Lot A and there's different, I'm sorry, Block A and Block B with different parcels. And that's what these are part of the adjusted meets and bounds for when the drainage, stormwater drainage, as well as the initial repetition which occurred, as we have a commercial property over here that's not on the map that still has some of the benefits of the main along Martins. The plat was originally approved back in October of 2018 by the Planning Commission with the Council formally approving it on March 18th of 2019. Phase one improvements were authorized on May 6. And the paving award went to Kansas Paving in the amount of $305,948.04. Phase Two was authorized on April 19th, 2021. And that also went to Kansas Paving for $298,303.00. The proposed resolution authorizes 34-foot-wide standard residential street from Cloverleaf to Sunset from the south property line of Lot 49, Block B, to the west line of Lot 57, Block A. The sidewalk would be constructed on one side at Cloverleaf and Sunset according to the specs between the design engineer and the city engineer with his approval and plan and specs. And then just noting what we had highlighted on the map there with the lot parcels that were reapportioned and are contained with the meets and bounds exhibited in the petition. The total estimated cost of the improvements is $313,000. It's to be spread equally as 1/34. The cost is borne 100% by the improvement district and 0% by the city at large and includes a multiplier. However, we don't anticipate that really taking effect as we'll be returning in April with the temp note issuance as well as the bid awards for contract work on that. There's a small publication cost. Otherwise, it's been approved to form by legal counsel. Are there any questions on the paving for Phase Three at this point? I know it's pretty standard at this time and it's the last...
You want to prepare it, Stan?
Yes, sir.
Remember who it was that proposed this last time on the paving, right?
Yes, sir. And we'll address that later. The, so the motion would be, kind of stealing Ryan's thunder here. The motion would be to approve the proposed resolution determining the advisability of making certain improvements and for certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of improvements in accordance with the findings of the street and sidewalk improvements for Cloverleaf Farms, Phase Three.
That works.
I don't know why the motion's worded that way, but that's what the legal says. So that's what I did.
Do you have a motion?
I would like to motion this to approve it.
Okay. Motion by Michael?
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed.
That'll be Resolution 2204.
This is the waterline improvement. Again, the same map. And generally speaking, it's the parcels in tan. Planning Commission approved the preliminary plat in October of 2018 with the Council approving it in March, at the regular meeting of March 18th, 2019. Phase One paving was authorized on May 6 with the bid being awarded to Meese Construction in the amount of $999,815. Paving improvements for Phase Two were authorized on April 19th, 2021, also going to Meese Construction in the amount of $139,336.07. It allows for the construction of an eight-inch waterline extension to be assessed upon the lots identified in the resolution, as well as those stipulated as parcels M through S. The estimated cost of improvements is $184,000, apportioned 1/34 equally across the parcels. 100% of this improvement's borne by the improvement district with zero by the city at large. And the resolution, as with the paving, includes multiplier of 1% per month, which we don't anticipate applying due to the turnaround for the temp notes and bid awards in April. As with the previous resolution, there's a small publication cost. And the motion as shown reflected.
Is there any questions?
So we need to make a motion to approve the H2 recommendation and actions?
Yes, sir.
I motion that.
Motion by Brent?
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
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 And that will be Resolution 2205.
And now I'll turn it over to Ryan, Brian, and H3, which is the contract cancellation with Kansas Paving. This is a follow-up to the Arbor Creek Phase One paving contract cancellation release that was authorized by the Council back in 2020, I believe.
Yeah. I mean, we've talked about this multiple times over the last couple of years. There was a dispute, and there was a dispute involving work that Kansas Paving was hired to perform in Arbor Creek. There were issues with the dirt work. Kansas Paving points the finger at others and deny any responsibility. But ultimately, the decision was made at that time to just go ahead and terminate the balance of the contract. We would hire somebody else to come in and finish what Kansas Paving was originally going to do. And that's what we did. We never finalized the cancellation agreement at the time because then a dispute came up over what Kansas Paving was going to be paid for the work that it had already performed. And there was basically a dispute over $30,000, I believe it was. We were proposing that they get paid one half of that. They were saying, no, it's, we perform any of that line item work, we get 100% of the pay. And so we were haggling over that. And ultimately, they refused to budge. And my recommendation to you was to, let's just pay it and get down the road and not haggle over this. You certainly have every right to take this into consideration in the future when you decide to award bids. And, you know, Mr. Hacker and his attorney acknowledged that during their conversation with me. I'm certainly not suggesting that you, you know, foreclose the possibility of Kansas Paving doing work. I don't think that's in the city's best interest. But I think it's definitely something you can take into consideration in the future in deciding whether or not to award a contract to Kansas Paving. So this is just to put the thing to bed, get them paid, and move on down the road.
Yeah, and I do want to say that I know both Ryan and Harland and Brooke and myself. But mostly, the three have spent a good deal of time on this. And Larry may be aware, Harland and I had had previous billing disputes with Kansas Paving with respect to Walnut Street and some other issues related thereto as well. So this is, just as the city attorney said, it's just, let's move on down the road. And we have ample authority, both within the petition and within the issuance. So the additional cost would bring a remaining balance for paving to, down to $98,997.11. So we've got, we've got the room.
That $98,000 figure, if I understand it correctly, that's to pay Kansas Paving plus the additional amount that we paid to, was it Pareto?
Yeah.
To come in and finish the...
Pareto and the standard, I can't remember the name off the top of my head, but I have it in my notes.
Erosion control folks.
From, yeah, standard erosion control for Alstead.
Yes, this was the job. They said they didn't have enough dirt to do.
For Arbor Creek, yes.
What was the $79,000 figure?
That's the total amount to be paid to Kansas Paving. So of that, it was about $30,000 that we contended they shouldn't be paid. And they said, no, we performed some of the work that was contemplated by that line item. And so we should get paid all.
And they were originally asking for $111,000 in total and change.
The dispute amount, the...
Yeah.
Yep.
So the staff recommendation would be to authorize the mayor to execute the cancellation and release agreement for the construction of the Arbor Creek Paving Collector and Paving for Phase One improvements with Conspec Inc. doing business as Kansas Paving.
Brian, can I ask?
Oh, yes, sir.
So we will get a signed cancellation agreement as part of this?
Yeah, this authorizes the mayor to sign it. And we won't pay it until we get that signature.
That was kind of a sticking point.
Pardon me, which I had in the analysis, that upon authorization and receipt of that, then at that point, we'll process.
And Kansas Paving's attorney had represented to me that they're fine with the agreement. So if they refuse to sign it, then we'll...
Where the previous negotiations that had occurred prior to this was directly with Mr. Hacker?
Yeah, I don't have any indication from Mr. Hacker as attorney that we're not going to sign this. In fact, all of my dealings with them, very cordial. We obviously disagree on what took place and who was at fault for what, but they were very respectful. Their conversations were...
Does he have any other questions?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the cancellation and release agreement for the construction of Arbor Creek Paving Collector and Paving Phase One improvements with Conspec Inc., DVA, Kansas Paving.
Motion by Sarah. Second by Larry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Item H4 is the rezoning of the city ground for the Big Arm Development, which is zoning case 22-1. The developer's engineering firm has submitted the rezoning application on behalf of the developer, Mr. Barb Armstrong, for the property that he has purchased conditional to the rezoning, a request located off of Goddard Road and 23rd Street. The parcels located between South Goddard Road to the east, Swanee Drive to the north, South Main to the west, and 23rd to the south. It's currently zoned R1. It is immediately adjacent to the pre-existing parcel, which was recently zoned from R1 to R2. That will be comprised of 29 duplexes with one existing pre-standing building. The property to the east, as we said, was approved on September 13th, 2021. The Council approved that rezoning at the October 4th, 2021 meeting. And that's gone from single-family R1 to multifamily R3. The Planning Commission did approve the current zoning request at the March 14th, 2022, meeting, meeting all of the necessary publication and notification of public hearing requirements. There are a number of articles which must be found. The existing uses and their character. The current lots are vacant for a community garden. The properties to the north are single-family detached. The multifamily developments are to the west with the east property being currently undeveloped. The current zone, zoning of the subject property, as we stated previously, is R1. It will be rezoned R3 if approved. Property to the east is R2-2 family. And that's with the property across the street being rural residential, which is essentially an empty field. The length of time that the property has remained, I'm sorry, has remained undeveloped, has that been a factor in the zoning consideration? No, it's remained undeveloped primarily due to the restrictive covenants that were in place prohibiting certain types of development, as well as a gas line easement and setback requirements. Would the request correct an error in the application of these regulations? And that answer is no. Is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, is the nature and significance of such changes, sorry, of such changed or changing conditions? And that's yes. The city of Goddard has a large residential increase. Most of it's single-family. So this will give us additional multifamily units that will diversify our base and also improve our density and increase and improve our current strategic objective to improve our density, to become more attractive to other commercial entities that will help improve the quality of life for both existing neighbors and future residents. It's currently served by City Water and Sewer, and those can be extended with streets as well. The subject property will be platted by the proposed developer upon the zoning change. Would screening be necessary for the existing or potential uses of the subject property? No, the adjoining properties are residential and the proposed use is residential. So it's conforming to the surrounding area. Is suitable vacant land or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as requested? No, the current zoning is R2. It's currently 8% of all zoned residential land. Currently, R1 residential land is around 89%, with R1A being 2% and R3 1%. If the request is for business or industrial use, are such uses to provide more services or employment opportunities, and this is a residential use, which would provide residential opportunities for current and potential future businesses in our community? The subject property suitable for the uses in the current zoning to which it's been restricted? And that's yes. It could go through a conditional use permit, and it is remaining residential. However, the lots being proposed for the development have bulk regulations designed for R2. What, to what extent would the removal of the restrictions or the approval of the zoning request detrimentally impact other property in the neighborhood? And the residential land analyst at Cedric County says that the empty lots in this development would increase the property values of the surrounding property. Would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent for the purpose of these regulations? And that answer is yes. The use would remain residential. The city is... The city is desirous of focusing on infill to maximize property values and increase density. The request in confor, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan? And does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? Yes, on page 17 of the comprehensive plan, which outlines our housing objectives. It includes the language, "Providing for multifamily dwellings, retirement housing, and other specialized housing as required to meet the needs of defined user groups within the community." Is the nature of or the support of the opposition to this request? Support comes in the request for more rental properties in Goddard to host those who are either unwilling or unable to purchase homes at the moment. Opposition comes from the desire for certain neighborhoods to remain relatively unchanged in their land use and composition of the single-family detached housing. Is there any information or are there recommendations on the requests available from professional persons or persons related with related expertise, which would be helpful in the evaluation? General planning practice encourages the introduction of increased-density developments to help sustain commercial development in proximity to residential neighborhoods, while increasing walkability for health and wellness, this, as well as maximizing the existing city infrastructure to offset maintenance and long-term costs. Number 17, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, or general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request? That answer would be no. The general health of individuals within the city of Goddard would benefit from more walkable developments. Property values would increase, and since it's also considered residential in land that is vacant, we're creating value on an otherwise empty parcel. And what this is showing here are the street boundaries with Goddard to the east, 23rd to the south, Main to the west, and Swanee to the north. This is the parcel under consideration, with the previous parcel being previously zoned R2, and the parcel here being considered R1. And then, this current parcel here is R3, which is the Brentwood Apartments. So, you see that it actually, R2 dovetails nicely with this. Then you have industrial on the east side.
Do you have a comment?
There's a small cost for publication of, of the hearing notices, and legal has approved those as to form. Are there any questions? And I would like to also take the time now to acknowledge that Micah's not here, as, he recently had a new addition to his family, and Micah did all this work on the slide and the staff reporting for you today.
I can tell this is a Micah slide, involving her.
Well, and those 17 points, by the way, there's case law that stipulates, and it's actually from Overland Park, that stipulates why those items are there and must be presented in the meeting.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
So, he's learned how to get a...
Did that plant on running over that little tree real soon?
No, that, it will remain in place. I think it will be more of a, a community-type, type building for area use. Not a city-community building, but, but for the, the private development.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Brett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Make your motion. Go ahead.
How are you doing?
You can blaze first.
Make your motion to approve the ordinance, rezoning the Big Arm Development.
Motion by Sarah. Second. Second by Michael. Roll.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Roll.
Councilmember Levin.
Yes.
Mayor Larkin.
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer.
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor.
Yes.
He'll be at ordinance 866.
Now, item H5 is a resolution to support for a state-owned and operated mental health hospital. Sedgwick County representatives and the Regional Economic Area Partnership Executive Committee have requested support for a regional mental health hospital. They reached out to the mayor that asked that this, this be put on the, the agenda for support. There's currently two mental health facilities in the state, one in the east in Osawatomie and the second in Larned. Approximately 75% of all Sedgwick County jail inmates are experiencing some form of mental health or substance abuse issues at the, at the time of incarceration. Communities in the Wichita metro and Sedgwick County region would benefit greatly from having a state-owned and operated facility in the largest city and second-largest metro area in the state. The resolution merely reflects support for such a facility in the regional location and doesn't obligate the city to any sort of future financial burdens. Turn it over to the mayor for any additional comments.
I really can't say much, other than what Brian said, other than what he reached after me. I did talk to some of my friends up in Dukka and ran by them, and they said, yes, this is something that we want to award, and it's something that they think can actually happen. So, that would be great for the city of county and the other communities, other cities that have signed the same resolution and support of this one.
So, there are no financial obligations and approval as to form. So, if there are no questions, I would recommend that you consider the proposed resolution supporting the efforts to establish and operate a state mental health hospital in the Sedgwick County region.
I would like to make a motion to ensure support of that.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Resolution 2206.
Good evening, all of the mayor and council. Item H6 is a renewal of the farmland lease for the city-owned property on 199th, just north of Kellogg. Part of that North Park Exchange, we from, with Tengadika Wildlife Park, we received approximately 19 acres farm ground that lies directly north of the public works facility. It's leased annually on a cash basis to local farmer Alan Smarsh for a fixed fee payment of $765.60. Lease is up for renewal every year at this time, and Mr. Smarsh has expressed interest in entering into a new lease for this 2021, 2022 growing year. Here is the piece of property right here. There's the waste park lagoons and the electric substation there, the public works facility's down there, so this is the piece we're talking about. As I said, this lease is up for renewal. It would, would allow the city, city to continue to accrue revenue from the property, and it would not require any city maintenance. The lease year is March 1st through February 28th. This is coming a little bit late because our last meeting was pretty heavy with, with, with items and didn't want to add another thing to the agenda. And it has to be approved, reviewed and approved annually by the city council until the council develops use for the, plan for the use of the property. Financials, none. Approved as to form. City Attorney Ryan Peck drew up the contracts a few years ago when we initially got the property. Is that recommended that the city authorize, if the council authorized the city under a cash rent lease agreement, Mr. Alan Smarsh, allowing crop production on the city-owned farm ground? Any questions?
It's a weird sort of timing, isn't it? Because he's already got a crop on it.
It is, and that's something that he and I talked about, and maybe in the future, the city should move this lease to earlier, right in the fall, because he actually called me in the fall, and Brian and I discussed whether we thought the council wanted to move forward, and since we don't have any, any plans, we told him to continue to work that property. So, he does, if we, if the council were to choose not to renew this, he does have some work and money already invested into that property for fertilizing and, you know, and chiseling, he just finished chiseling it last week. I spoke with Mr. Smarsh today. He doesn't have any plans to not lease this property. And I told him, as of right now, the city didn't have any plans for it, and it keeps us from having to maintain it.
This is kind of what happened last year, too.
We, we were, we were right up to the, we did it in March last year, but really, this is something maybe we need to look at it earlier in the year, and I don't know what the legality is of changing that contract term. That would be something.
I mean, you can always change it going forward. My recollection is that there's something in the statutes with regard to farm leases and...
Okay. Okay, and that may be, and that may be why historically it had been that.
I could be misremembering.
Historically, this was the lease term, though. When we received the property, that's what he was leasing under that term.
Yeah, I think he was on a year-to-year basis.
Typically, you're still entitled to crop.
Yeah, once they put that crop in, I think we're entitled to harvest it.
And part of our, Brooke and I's discussion initially was, if you remember when this was coming up, we, we even discussed, do we not want to renew and just essentially put it into grass? And, and the discussion was, well, then, then we have to care and maintain the grass, and at least this way, it's continuing its present use and, you know, we're generating some loose revenue off of its current state.
It just makes it bad for the person leasing it because they're sticking money into something they don't know that they're going to use.
When does he plant the crop?
He will plant the crop after this meeting. I spoke with Mr. Smarsh today and, and...
So, he hasn't planted?
No, and he, he will plant, say, it'll be a fall crop probably mild this year. Now, if it would have been wheat, he would already had it in the ground, of course, last fall. So, that's why the timing of this, we may want to look at that. Something I also mentioned to him that he was open to, and I don't know if council will be open to, is a multi-year lease, which maybe in the future, move forward to two or three years, so that way, he knows where he's sitting with obviously favorable terms if we needed to, to, to cancel that lease, but...
Why can't we just, I mean, you know, like all our, our land is, somebody farms it for us.
And that kind of ties it up.
It says that, that it automatically resets unless one of the two parties...
You get two thirds, and they get a third, just from farming.
We don't, we want to do a cash basis. We do not want to have any money invested into this crop.
Yeah.
Generally, on that, you have money invested in that crop, you get a third, they get two thirds. Cash basis, we invest nothing, we have no work, they just give us a check at the end of the day, at the end of the season.
What's the average, what's the average land lease, per acre?
I don't, it's, that depends, I'm sure, I don't know.
Very variable, variable on crop typically, and how well the crop does.
How flat the ground is, what kind of, a lot of variables.
The way we're doing it's best, I don't know if a multi-year is good because it, it will kind of tie our hands up. If you want to do something with the ground, you know...
Well, and, and section two, I mean, we have, that's part of why we didn't look at it as being an issue sooner, was we have an auto renewal unless someone terminates. So, it's going to essentially reset. And that's, that's in paragraph two, on page one of, of the agreement.
Both of us have outs on this contract.
Really, what, you know, because Larry's right, you don't want to be investing in any piece, any part of the ground, but we really ought to check this.
And that, and that is exactly, Mr. Smarsh and I had conversations on that last, early, early last fall, late last summer, just because of that reason. And maybe, maybe if legally we can do in August, August, I don't know, something of that nature might be another option, or...
Technically, this conversation is pointless because it already renewed since nobody...
It does technically.
Since nobody...
It really kind of...
But, but we want, I mean, the, the intent is to keep, keep it current, keep it renewed, so that it's just not on the shelf.
Right.
And then that way, everything's transparent.
I guess my question was, while we're talking about it now, instead of a year from now, when we talk about it again after the fact, why don't we address when it should actually be renewed, now, and change the date now?
We probably inherited the term.
Right.
We did.
We did.
We inherited the term exactly.
And so, we just continued on with the same term that they had always agreed to, and we can make it.
How many land was it?
This is the...
On November 1st or August 1st. I would probably leave it to the farmer, to, I mean, what makes the most sense from a farming perspective?
Yeah, and that was, my question was...
And he and I really haven't discussed that. I, I will talk to Mr. Smarsh tomorrow, and I can discuss that with him, and if we choose to, council chooses to make a change.
I think we need to leave it on a year-to-year thing, just in case somebody else comes along and starts crying foul, that they didn't get an opportunity to do it, leasing.
Right, yeah, and I'm not in any shape or form saying, take it away from this gentleman. I'm just saying, let's, let's address the date and fix it, so he's not, well, I've already put this much into it. And I get...
So, we're not doing the same conversation every year about...
Every year.
And, and, sure.
How much land do we actually own?
What was the question?
How many, how much land do we have leased?
Do we have leased?
Yeah.
This is it, this is it?
This is it?
This is it.
Yeah, about 19 acres.
Just, yeah, 19 and change. Mr. Smarsh can, wants to continue this lease. He has no, no intention for my conversation with him of terminating any time, so...
Make a motion to approve as to form.
Motion by Brett.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank council.
And I want to thank Thatcher. He, he thought ahead, saw the forecast, and got the drone out on Friday, so these, these images are as of Friday. And you can see the view looking back to the southwest with the ball, the current ballfields that are constructed. You can see the construction of the, the current Phase 2 ballfields. Here's the Hampton Inn Hotel with the Health Club being contained here. There's the childcare facility. This is the, the water park, and then a concave roof would be the aquatic swimming facility. Now, you can see the view of the, the fields currently under construction. Not much has changed, given the weather of the past weekend. This is as of March 17th. So, we have 80% of the lots available, 20% filled in Arbor Creek. Autumn Blaze is 100% full. Cloverleaf is 60%, 63% filled, with 37% available, and that includes the phase that was approved today. Elk Ridge is 100% filled or sold. Rusty Creek is 100% available, and we'll give you an update on that here very soon. St. Andrews, the Seasons and Spring Hill are all 100%. So, of the total 1,556 lots available for purchase within the city, we have 350 available. So, essentially, we have about an 80% occupancy rate. Certainly look to, to utilize more, 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 more development. And as you can see from Micah's annotation, there are 13 lots available for Phase 2 Cloverleaf before they're, they're built out. And you could see Phase 1 Arbor Creek, and this is facing southwest with the school facility and the ballfields in the background. You can see Phase 2 that's currently under construction. And the clubhouse with the community pool. Elk Ridge is pretty much built out. There's only a few lots remaining for actual construction. Cloverleaf, just highlighting kind of our schedule here for Phase 3. We'll look at tip notes and bid awards in April. You can see Phase 2 here with foundations. Phase 2, again, facing south with the previous image facing west with the lagoons on the right-hand side. Rusty Creek is now ready, ready to start pulling permits, so, and we, we now have actual through-street. So, if you're in Autumn Blaze or Hopper and you can't get out, you now have a through, through fare of 199th. Wanted to provide an update on the, the citizen complaint that had occurred at the March 4th meeting on the environmental code, and just to let you know that Micah did visit with the property owner in person. with the property owner in person and sent an actual notice violation as well. So the property owner has until March 20th to remediate the issue. Just a reminder that you have your, and I've heard back from two of you that are interested, so if you're, if you're interested in the chamber event, please let me know. Also, just to say that Neighbors United and the city annual cleanup will be April 30th, so we'll have the dumpsters available for that. And that concludes my report. If you don't have any questions for myself or the rest of the city team, we'll be looking at the equity benefit fee, sorry, I forgot about this slide. The phone hall, I'm sorry, the city hall phones, which are no longer supported, also on April 4th, and then we'll have code cleanup, vehicle replacement, and some sign discussions for the 18th, and then begin the budget process in May. Thank you.
Larry, you got it done? Sarah? Michael?
Yeah, look, there's people from the record, okay?
I don't have an update on it.
I don't have anything, I'm good.
My dad said, I'm going to tell you something, your Public Works does an amazing job cleaning the streets every day. He says, I come to Dove Drive over here every day. He says, it's always, I'm like, wow, take that.
They clean them so good that there's a pothole.
Unfortunately, that's true.
They should have slid up the dirt into the hole.
Well, there's a city to the east of us that does not clean their streets that well, and they put a crack across my windshield with a little...
City of Wichita?
City to the east of us.
All right, thank you, bro. All righty. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Sarah, second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.